Hi, everyone called Jared.
Here.
Matt.
This is Lynn.
Danny.
Yeah.
Donald. Travis.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Rodney Young.
Here.
Lee.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Mundy. Mark. Coral Mapp.
All right, reading and approval minutes from the regular meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Everybody should have a copy of those. Let's go through the second.
My phone's made by Lynn, second up by Rod. Danny.
Yeah.
Travis.
Yes.
Rod.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Donald, yes. There's not enough here to approve.
All right, discussion, action, finance officer report. Kim?
Um, the November sales tax appropriation was four thousand seven seventy-four sixty. Um, on the report, I did add a line for an approval in the initials if it's over two hundred fifty dollars of who approved it. Um, I don't think there was anything out of the ordinary on any of them. I haven't had a chance to look at them. We're up to six months on our insurance. That's estimating next year at one twenty-five. I think we'll figure out the base that way.
Anybody have any questions for her on that? I make the motion approved, right?
Same. Motion made by Mike, second up by Matt. Jared.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Donald, yes.
Anything on December expenditures? Anything on the updates?
Do what?
Anything on ARCA updates?
Um, yes, on the ARCA update. All of the current ARCA grants are closed at this point. Monday, um, the commissioners of Pioneer requested a upgrade on their storm sirens, um, top software and such. And the commissioners suggested that I vote for the remainder of the ARCA money with that. I did email them yesterday, but I have not heard that because that portal is closed. So it would just be, I told them everything about what we needed and it was, I requested up to the eleven thousand one sixty-seven. Um, after speaking with Sydney, I don't think there's one to be by the little over seven that has been turned back and has to be allocated by end of December. So hopefully I will hear something from them before Monday, the commissioner meeting. But all of the current ones are closed. And that one will be just off the quote and no money's coming back off of it.
Okay. And item five, citizen and consumer's points, let me do three minutes. Anybody sign anything?
Yes.
Room.
I'm fine. Sorry, I had to make you a note. What was that guy? This is from last, last meeting. It was here and everybody brought it, talked about trying to dissolve the board or whatever. And I just, I talked to a few people around, came up with some questions to make sure that we consider before we're trying to take action on something like that. But it's like, uh, my first question is, would the station stay Title Nineteen? I mean, if you dissolved it, then all individual stations may not fall underneath that category. They'd probably go to, I don't know, a different title. Uh, some person said eleven and eighteen. I'm not upon all my titles. I didn't do my research, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, if you did dissolve it, then it'd be twelve individual stations. So the cities and towns would probably have to take back over whatever is around, Hocke, Acson, and then Cobb. You know, some of those states and Pioneer and Orange, you know, I mean, some of those towns would be all right. I don't know about Carroll, Carroll and Acme and some of those communities out in just nowhere, how that would happen. But, you know, I don't know how they fall. How would it affect the current pension system for current firefighters?
It wouldn't.
Not at all? You don't think, I mean, if we're not considered a fire department, I don't know if it's gonna, if that's gonna, I didn't know if that's gonna change anything. Sales tax probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't change because that's already been voted in, but then again, you're gonna have to have each department have three or four members overseeing all the monies. You know, I mean, you wouldn't have Kim anymore. I mean.
Yeah, she's gonna remain. She'll remain and do what she's doing.
I mean, I mean. I mean, I'm just, but like I said, I mean, if you dissolve the board though, then there will be more there. So I'm just putting that out there. But there'd be a public meeting for each one. If everybody had their own meetings, would, you know, the public could be able to come to all those open meeting acts, et cetera, et cetera. If we did split it, right now we have numbers. And we get cheaper insurance, we get cheaper everything as far as our numbers. We have a paging system. Is each station ready to do their own paging system? I mean, right now, you know, I mean, like I said, everything is gonna be, everything would be dissolved. So everything's gonna go up because you'll have less numbers, basically, the way I look at it. I don't know. Like I said, I'm just throwing some questions out there. Higher insurance, workless comp, you know, you have more liabilities. Of course, everyone would still try and work together, you know, because we're all, we've all been doing it anyway, but we'd all still, you know, try to work together for sure. But still, you got less people. If you dissolve the board and if there's a lapse, y'all saying that the pension wouldn't hurt, but if there's a lapse and it takes time to take over. I know that we got grandfathered in whenever the pension system came in around, I mean, whenever I first joined, there wasn't a pension system. I didn't get on for a pension system. But now that it's in place and it's there, then apparently whoever's forty-five years and older wouldn't get put in there. They'd be kind of flushed. So, I mean, you know, the existing ones, if they're expecting that, if they're vested, then they could retire and get some of the pension. Otherwise, there wouldn't be anything at all. And then, uh, I guess, of course, county commissioners, if, if, if we split it up or whatever else, the county owns quote unquote, or it's in the deeds, that they have the land underneath their station. So the county commissioners probably have to deed back all the properties to all the stations. So that's just some thoughts. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, these are, this is, pops with different ones and this and that. These are a few questions I came up with. So just wanted to throw it out there.
Anybody else sign anything?
Thank you, Kirk.
Yep.
Item six, discussion, action, and commissioners represented. Gary?
Unless anybody had any questions at this time, but me, then, uh, probably. Item ten will be, where I'm discussing things that come from that.
County chief's report?
It's been somewhat peaceful. Would use peaceful as a word.
That's real close.
Uh, we're moving forward on our dealings on January one. If anybody doesn't have a ton, we'll be asked to leave. It is a federal requirement. It is not totally can't do.
Do we have any to add or nothing?
I think we're about ninety percent right now. But we got people down for fifteen years and still haven't done it. So it's time to make the change.
No questions for Rodney either? Going once, one pause. All right.
I, I might have a question on that one. Not that I care, but have they all been notified prior to today?
They have been notified, notified for six times.
Have they all been notified that they had to go January first to do that?
Yes.
And I have a question.
It's been very, you know.
Oh, I know that they've been trying to get it done for the last, everybody's been dropped in the last year, but I, I, that's the first I'd heard of it until January first it was out.
No, no, five days in November and the January first to get this done.
And that is a super simple thing to do.
Oh, I, I'm busy there. So as long as they've had a fair warning.
These people have ignored it.
All right. Item eight, anybody motion?
I'm moving on to executive session.
Right then.
Jared. Matt.
Yeah.
Danny.
Yeah.
Travis.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Travis. Lee. Mike.
Oh, remember, dear.
Here.
Kansas.
Mike.
Yes.
Do we have any other new firefighters here tonight? On new firefighters, Alex West, who made the latest forecast, Jeffrey Kinsley forecast.
Jared. Matt. Danny. Travis.
Yes.
Rod. Lee. Mike.
And transfers personnel. Ashley Ebron, Brad, and Sandra Anderson, whatever.
I'm actually looking at Ashley Ebron. If we're done. Sandra Anderson. But.
Jared.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Travis. Keith.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Lee. Mike.
Any new business committee for everybody?
Um, can I set, uh, means this is. It's, it's a pile.
Yeah.
We need like total on our, for it all over.
Uh, we had it last week.
Maybe Thursday's ready. They gotta finish chipping up all the nursing products.
Right.
But that concrete has to set for twenty-four hours and a bare bit of them.
Yeah.
At that point, we won't work yet.
Well, Thursday.
Exactly. Then we'll, then we'll reset all the fixtures.
Then you're what?
Reset all the fixtures. That's all right. It'll be covered up. No way you can tell. Did they paint the trailer?
They marked it.
I'll scrub it in. Very good.
Well, I mean, you've seen it.
I know.
Well, the first time. There you go. Well, I do, but sometimes. I could about six.
Man, if you guys are.
All right, you can't get, they go under your ground. I mean, that's.
We can get pulled over there. There's a one pound.
Do you know when you hold the first green?
I was going to say.
But it's just like.
I do. Oh, my. No, I was. Just shaking sides. Just sorry. That's all I have. Just shake the sides and get tossed.
That doesn't mean much anymore. What are you laughing about? You're about one.
Are we still recording?
Can you not watch trucking out of the knee?
I've been in a situation like that for a year of a long time.
Not for me.
She's gonna get, this is gonna make her whole channel just. Just go up.
I have one clip that has ten thousand beers.
Yeah. We get the word out about this one. We may have to, we may have to ask for votes.
Taking donations to cut air. It has to go to Grady County Department.
Uh, no.
We raised ten thousand dollars.
I'm not cutting my hair.
You know what? If somebody would do something like that, I'm tapped. I'd give it to her.
I think you donate to lots of work. These are patients.
You just get rolled up in a, in a, in a, in a.
That makes the grass.
We like, we like to get out and then build a very nice. Don't put your girl down like you know that. I can see you.
Yeah. You start worrying, you know, starting to get concerned.
But you couldn't see. I'm pretty good. We reached that.
I wasn't looking.
So you got. I, I lost. Thank you. The light at the end of the tunnel. I can't see the light.
People. We're at three six. All right, there's no one that gives them. They don't take much of time. Item number ten, discussion, actions, and orders to fire for.
Whatever the board decides to do. It's a board. It's me personally. Whatever the fire departments, the fire personnel, I support. So. Slated that.
I've got a question for Kirk. So are you in, in your research, you're playing, you're interpreting it by Mason Adrian?
No, you're fine. I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not trying to the whole thing any either.
No, you're good. So are you interpreting it as with the dissolved, if, if, if all of them, the fire force itself?
As far as, as far as.
As far as Grady County Fire Department?
Yeah, as far as Grady County.
I just want.
Right. I mean, we will be twelve in, in, in the stations.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll still be Grady County Fire.
Right.
But, I mean, it, it won't be Grady County Fire, Hocke, Acson stations, Grady County Fire, Naples, Grady County Fires, whatever. It'll just be individual stations. My worry is, is, is right now we got discounts on insurance, on vehicle insurances, on, uh, because we have numbers. And each individual station, once we're independent, independent stations, those rates are gonna go way up because you're not gonna have the numbers right now. We're a large group. You know, I mean, how much insurance gonna be for, for fire trucks as opposed to, uh, any truck from every Grady County as a whole?
Well, I got a question on this because.
I mean, I, like I said, I mean, these are things that just I'm thinking about. So.
Okay. Say, uh, Rodney, just hand me this. This is from.
Pension.
From the pension. Okay, okay. Sure, I just go reading something. Uh, it says, uh, Rodney, you had asked me to provide my insight on the Board of Directors of the County Fire Department, specifically to ask if the board could be disbanded. Uh, Title Nineteen, oh, S three hundred and one, E three states, in part, at the time of making its order, organizing such county fire department, the Board of County Commissioners shall, shall, five directors. It goes on to say, the Board of County Commissioners shall, shall, for fire departments to operate more than five stations, appoint additional directors of a county fire department until the number of directors equals the number of stations operated by that county fire department. In my opinion, this language of shall means that the Board of Directors of the County Fire Department must exist. And I'm unaware of any language without a county fire department in order to be disbanded because it's a double purchase ranking, uh, effective director of the, of the fire management system. So that, this goes along with what, what Kirk was saying where it wouldn't be Grady County Fire Department. It would be, because it's.
In order to have a board, county officials have to solve Grady County Fire.
Got it.
And then we'd have to get rid of the pension agreement. All the business. And then to solve our board, actually get rid of everything. As long as we have Grady County Fire and we're on pensions, we have to have a.
Okay.
Say like.
For the pension to consist of Grady County Fire Department.
If they've all twelve of us quit, they got the, the twelve in, in the, like your bundle. That's what I'm saying. In order to get pensions, we have to have a board, according to.
Which is what, what Kirk was saying, if it went the other direction, each station would have to have an internal board in their station.
Yeah. I mean, you'd have to have, you'd probably have to have three personnel because you. You gotta have three. You know, you gotta have these five deciding factor, just like commissioners, whatever else. But then again, it's kind of like every station's gonna have to have a chief, assistant chief, a secretary, a treasurer. You know, all this, you know, to take care of all these things. Hock asset does good to keep five people on at one time. He does a lot of times, so.
Gary, I've got a question. So if it it was twelve stations, the twelve departments, would they not still be owned by Grady County and operating them?
Well, now if it's going to our ten, which is. Station with it.
You go back to. You need the station.
At that point, then you don't need seven hundred, seven one, seven two, all the trucks removed because they're not controlling anything.
Did that come about that? I mean, I've heard about. That's.
I think once you have what the head there is on the markets, it has to.
Really? You have to decide that at a later time.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think all the departments will.
Figure out the funding.
Yeah, go get it, figure out something. So you won't judge that.
Well, I mean, each. Each department, but each station, they're out their own funding because they get their tax money and they all have their donation accounts. Each station is taking their own funding.
Right.
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 And then they're.
They have to have someone to take care of that funding and.
That's perfect. Brother, the treasurer.
Yeah.
You're actually five for the fire. Each station. By now, twelve and one. Depending on what chapter you want to do and how many board members you have to have. Look, chapter eleven, you have three board members. Get into nineteen C, you've got five board members. You keep going.
Eric Renninger did tell me we could continue to be in top of nineteen because we are still coming on that. Coming sales staff. We can continue to be in top of nineteen.
As the top line, we need to have five board members. That's our station.
We could say if our top.
I just said. Yeah, well, you have to meet the criteria of top of nineteen. But what I'm trying to grasp or understand is exactly what this one does. What benefit or has or benefit or doesn't have versus us being here, us not being here. I can't, I have no neat straight answers.
Same thing. When I did pension, they had to have a board to pay the pension.
What is my understanding is they pension.
No, that's. They're going for a pension. See, we used to have a pension.
Right.
Yeah. They dissolve. There's like five pensions that the state don't.
In the state.
In the state.
Is that, it was my impression now of this board was more. Eventually.
They were paying pensions. Now, uh, the pension. So. For anyone. Yeah.
Well, if you look at top of nineteen, it says that the board. Assets of fire. It is like a.
Yeah. Well, that's the case, why we also have to count the commissioners and the board of clerks. But we got so many things on both sides, I'm just trying to. I'm trying to grasp right now since we're having this discussion.
I think because we have the sales tax money, that's what we're trying to determine because they're over that. And so they they oversee the sales tax, so therefore that part of our budget, they are part.
And that will still, they will still be a part of it, even though we.
First hill.
All offers.
Yes, because they are over the.
Right.
Hey, boss, I'm saying. I said, if I said they're, she said they're here for the overseas sales tax. So why are they trying to put guidelines on us? Uh, or say who's in place, put people in place, I mean, but they're here over the sales tax, not people. Correct? Then why are they stepping away?
That's what I'm trying to understand is if there's things that we're doing that we don't actually have control over. And I'm trying to understand why plenty of people still think six channels of boards approve. And we're just one of them in the middle. We're not trying to say anything we approve can get denied one day. Anything we deny can get approved eventually. So I'm trying to understand.
If the board here denies it, then it should be bad, should be going.
It's not supposed to.
Yeah. Exactly.
I mean, if you look at the top of nineteen rules, that's.
Okay.
But I mean, we know like the twelve stations, each station, if anything, there's a fat tree. There's lots of expenses that each station will have to pick up. And you know, all the software that we just brought from Beijing, uh, just for Grady County. Each station will have to have their own software for that. A lot of stations. Under. Pay us. I mean, under, you know, we spent a lot of money for all of that.
So what about all the money we just got done with? One of them is grants. Is that going? Buy this on the book? And how would that, how would that flow?
So if he was an individual.
That's something that I just found, just came to me with those grants.
So if you were individual department like we was, then we can actually apply for the immigrant. Each department can apply for a immigrant.
Right now. But what about?
We can't do it now, we can't.
But what about all the money we got just recently in the last couple of years, knowing the company that we bought for this?
I don't think we.
Well, he has a wide board of Grady County Fire.
Yeah, Grady County Fire, it's one of the five. It's been a station.
The three big ones right now, the small ones were stations that they.
Right.
But the water stations.
So that will open up forestry. It was managed, it's any forestry stuff to do. That would keep a lot of foresters left where we're at. Yeah. Lots of, Freddy's got three or four trucks last few years that are reaching twenty three. But state banks are eighty percent of the truck. That department has been fifty percent. Basically. So you got to continue to stretch for a month. Oh, I know. Yeah.
A lot of expenses you may not have to. But you have to think about what is your station's expenses to be, or they're not, if you're an individual station, I suppose to. Uh, all of this. Well, we have never been or some of the contacts. Not your station.
James sucks.
All these things.
James, you guys, where should be why?
Well, I'm just trying to soak it all in, so basically what we got the board, what we're getting cheaper insurance. And and stuff like that, I mean. I've been sitting like I'm on the floor. There's like a. And the board is out there. Pissy ass stuff that goes on. And instead of just coming in and see what we think do, get it, you know, buy it back or anything like that, it should be run pretty simple. And what we're, what we're supposed to be doing is supplying all our power fighters, you know, the things that they need without any, you know, us picturing or anything like that. I mean, for for my, for my stance, I think each one of the fire stations, I think they should be the one saying, well, they've been built so long. You know, and if we get the insurances and stuff, uh, stuff like that, you know, say what it is for each individual station, stuff like that. And we're appropriate as money, you know, every month and everything, so, I mean, we pretty much know what our budget is. And, you know, if we get the bound or something like that, the county come in. You know, to help some, you know, if they get the bonds, they might come in and help.
The county comes in when it's a county department, they don't come in.
Well, I, I mean, I just think it's, I'll be left up to individual, the fire stations, what they want to do because they're the ones that have to go through this. And and the way I look at it, if all these individual fire stations, the people that's in charge. They should make their decision and if they, you know, can't make the decision, they don't need to be there. You know, every one of the guys I've seen, they're like very qualified and I don't, I mean. Would, okay, well, yeah, say it's just like Rodney, would would, uh. The seven hundred, would you cut it big to where he could be over these twelve or in C? You know, everybody's gonna, it's not gonna, if people went to twelve individuals places, we're still gonna be helping one another. It shouldn't change at all to make a difference, individual or not. So. That's the main headline.
So my understanding is nothing will change other than we will just eliminate this process. Commissioners will still be over it and then we'll just have to create a board at each station.
It'll be over.
Yep. Commissioner. So not a lot changed from my understanding, but I could be wrong.
And can the commissioners be over it if they're individual stations?
They still have.
Well, you guys are over it for Bridge Creek and all them too. As far as.
Yeah. Yeah. Everything in Grady County. On this tax fund in C. Garden. Uh, Bridge Creek. Yeah, Minko, Red Springs, Chickshaw. They get their same money. Fifty twenty all. And we're not over anything except the tax.
Right. Tax.
Yeah.
Will not let you on the spot, but as far as the finance side of it. What, do you see big changes?
I did have some questions as far as, uh. And this was before my time too, but when they were Grady County Fire Service, how did that work? Did everybody have their individual FDID numbers?
Yes.
And they just didn't. They weren't Grady County Fire Department, Grady County Fire Service at that time.
Under umbrella.
Was under the umbrella of Grady County Fire Service. And that's kind of where my head was on that, but, um, you know, right now the stations give a thousand dollars a month to fund utility bills. Uh, fuel, sheriff fees. And if that stops, then we're gonna have to revisit how we're gonna do that. If each station's gonna take care of just insurance specific to their apparatuses and the fuel specific to their apparatuses or to their station. I see where there's some stations that will be paying a significant amount of that fuel and other stations that won't because of the actual run volume. And my, uh, blanket PO every month for comdata is seventy five hundred dollars. So let's say Nintac pays fifteen hundred of that and there's another station that pays a hundred fifty. I mean, that's just how it's gonna be. It's just how it would have to be unless there's a decision made under. Some other rules that that would be Grady County Fire Service.
You're saying everyone's paying a thousand.
Yes, everybody pays a thousand now and it pays the fuel.
Stations like Harold that use no fuel.
Right.
Are, they're paying a thousand even though they're not using a couple hundred dollars worth of.
But that thousand also pays utilities and other things. It's not just for fuel.
No, it does. It pays all your station utilities.
Because right now it's split twelve ways equally.
Right.
Whereas if we're all paying our own bills, some stations' bills are gonna go up and some stations' bills are gonna go down.
And you can look on the eighty two hundred account because it breaks down what that station, like the specific stations. And, you know, some of them are four hundred, some of them are eighty two dollars as far as utility bills. So that's another something we need to keep in mind that is going to be different.
If we split up, what happens like Heartland will join together, will Heartland still be over all of us or not? We have to all go back individually.
Heartland is station specific.
Yeah, that's already station specific.
So, um, but we do have about, I'm doing this adding in my head, about ten thousand dollars worth of one-time fees that are paid in July. Kell Pro, uh, two three sixty, Stanley, you know, the rental, uh, copier rental. I mean, I have no idea how that would, what that would look like.
Yeah.
Each station would need those things.
Yeah.
So what's the difference in being Grady County Fire Service under a number like and being Grady County Fire? I mean, like, you're not really accomplishing much.
Other than you have the individual FDID numbers instead of one.
Which one day was gonna buy us hard because when ISO figures it out, they're gonna want a separate number for each station and they're gonna make us do it past twelve stations at one. These fours and fives and sixes were gonna look.
Yeah. Everybody's gonna be, I.
Talking about the ones with the lower ISOs?
Yes.
Or the higher.
But I gave you the example, that means you're Nintac station, responsible for covering the Harold station.
Because we're in the same county.
Yeah.
Now, you're saying that in the event of what?
If if they ever figured out and decided to force us to do.
To do different FDID numbers.
Well, that's.
We only got one.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha. So we should have.
Yes. For ISO.
Technically.
Yes.
Why don't we?
Well, we're cheating the system right now because we're doing ISO first station.
Oh, that was great. Turned that phone off.
I mean, that's what he said.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to. Trying to. Twelve. So the FBI.
You're gonna get them.
Situation is irrelevant, we're supposed to have twelve anyways.
That's why.
So if anybody's going to jail, DM, he's one of the.
It's gonna be a guy retired from ISO. That's your facts.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, and that's another thing on the ISO, because if that does come back and bite us, then all these people in Grady County that voted. Now their insurance has gone up.
Insurance is going up every day.
That would go up a whole lot more.
And it's going up because of all the floods and all the hurricanes and has nothing to do with us either.
There are people that that ISO doesn't affect them because half the insurance companies, like State Farm, don't need to recognize ISO.
Yep. And back when we were individual stations, shit, we had crap over there that wouldn't pass nothing, trying to throw stuff together for ISO and just trying to make something happen.
But you didn't have the tax money then either.
No, we didn't have the tax money.
Right.
But we didn't have any money then either. Zero.
Right. And that's been one of the biggest pushes for the tax money is we have increased our ISO ratings with the tax money or.
With the help of.
Yeah, with the help of the tax money. And some of it's also just come down to just doing things correctly, doing things right, maintaining things better than than it used to be. And getting better equipment that doesn't require as much maintenance.
He's saying we can. Apply for a fee. As of right now, no. But for your individuals, we can't.
You can apply for it, but with the numbers we have as far as units and personnel.
We're down the list. We're down the list. Way down.
And the other side of that is you gotta have four of individual stations applying, right? You gotta have somebody at those twelve stations grant. They're gonna get to do that. Single department that's got four trucks.
That would be like us trying to get a grant against like New York City or something like, or some big place. They're just gonna send a grant that way instead of.
You've got a hundred and fifty somewhat people here versus the little Bray station down there that's got ten or fifteen, who they're gonna find first, you know?
Right.
Which we do have an abnormally large, considered fire department because of the twelve stations is even though some of our stations have four or five members. As a, because we're ranked as a whole as Grady County Fire Department. Very large fire department.
Everybody's got at least.
Everybody's got six.
Everyone's got six?
At least.
Okay. They show up?
They're on the.
He didn't say that. So I'm like, would we, would it do something?
So I'm gonna, would we, would it do something, I'm just throwing this out there, so like you were talking about, you know? We're here for the firefighters, okay? And we're here for each department. So if it needs to be, they can go ask their, all their other stations. Would it be better for on this board, if we still have to have this board? Would it be better if a firefighter that was on that station be a board member? Then y'all know what you need, you know what's going on from every station.
Mike, that's fair.
So basically what you're saying is we'd have to disassemble this board.
You want, I mean, you wouldn't have to like.
And then rebuild it.
You wouldn't have to like really dis- disassemble this board is, I mean, if as an individual, you know, say like as me, if that's what my station wants to do, and if my station wants to put a firefighter in this board and the majority of the other stations wants to put a firefighter on this board, I will step down.
You want to say that? You were a firefighter.
I was a firefighter, that's correct. But if they want a current, you're saying if that's what my department wants, if they want a current firefighter on the board, you know, and if that's what all the majority of the stations want, then I will step down. If that's what my station wants, that's what the firefighters want, you know? That's what we, as we need to know from the firefighter. Because like you said, there's, you know, mixed emotions in order, PC any that goes on this board, you know, for a few little things. But if I, like, if you had a department member on this board, then you're just not gonna be as hectic as it is now.
I got a question. What is this board actually over? What is its main role for us?
You let us go over and over.
Cause I've heard it was for the pension. I was heard it was just for the taxes. And I heard it was basically to run to Great County Fire. So I would really like to know from the board, what is y'all's specific role?
I don't know.
According to Title Nineteen, it's to oversee the accounting and the assets.
Okay, so it, it is not to put certain chiefs in, like, as your chief, in their position?
That's what your SOG and your SOP says.
Says the fire board is?
Yes. I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with Title Nineteen, but that's what your SOG and your SOP says. That came about over the years.
Which ones? I know there've been three or four of them in play. I like three of them now.
Go back to twelve and start there.
Anybody else got any other opinion?
Trying to soak everything.
I mean, what Mike brought up before, I mean, well, you know, as far as having a member of the fire department on this board, that's the way it used to be a long time ago. But they, the, I don't know how it exactly happened, cause I mean, I just came, kinda came around, started coming around a little bit. But it slowly got to where they didn't want a fire member or firefighter on the board because it was more that station, focused on that station. We're more of a unity now, so I don't really think it would be that way. So, you know, I, I think Mike has a good idea if all the board members don't wanna be here.
I mean, and like I said.
And we get a firefighter from each station to be, represent that station.
I would like to see that, but I would like to see it not as a chief. I've heard the suggestion that the chief should be, make up the board. I don't think that that gives you any form of protection.
I think it'd be good if everyone elected someone from the station.
Right, but not necessarily, not necessarily the chief. I don't, I think the chief should be.
Excluded.
Should be excluded.
Yeah, you probably ought to exclude him. He's got enough responsibilities. Yeah.
But then there again, that if, that's what the firefighters want.
Right, right, right.
But then it's up to commissioners to appoint.
That is correct.
Well, not if you're gonna do it that way. It's up to the fire departments is what you're saying.
I'm talking about if they want to get rid of me and put a firefighter in this.
If you're saying that, it ain't up to the commissioners to appoint them. It's up to the fire stations to appoint them.
It's gotta be approved.
They still have to get approved. Any, any member of this board.
Right.
Has to be approved by the commissioners. No matter what, if I step down or, you know, or if.
With the board this way, but if you're saying to put the firemen in there and let the fire departments decide, it should be up to the fire stations to decide, not you. Well, the fire station. Am I not?
It's to Title Nineteen makes.
Okay, let's listen to, listen to some of the firefighters.
But they say we're still gonna be.
I think it's a big one that everybody's thinking about is getting back to your own individual FDID numbers. Because like Rodney said, that's gonna affect our insurance rate twenty-six.
Irregardless of what happens with this board, that needs to happen.
Yes.
If it don't, we might never get the tax game, right? Our insurance goes to the rate.
Can we still have this board and have that?
Yes, that's how it should be, irregardless.
I, I'm, I'm, the board is constantly fine amongst ourselves, amongst firefighters, and we've gotta find a common area somewhere to stop and have simple meetings, but.
If we put firefighters in that position, we could do a board meeting and a chief's meeting at night and be done. Cancel a meeting a month, and like you say, if you let the station pick their person, you don't have somebody that's trying to dominate everything. You'll have somebody that's more open, should be more open-minded for the whole station.
I think I'm fixing to open up a can of worms here, but I'm. Okay, if, if what you're saying is you're, the guys from your station, guys and gals, I'm sorry, want to have a firefighter as their board member, they would vote to do, well, I, I know that my station, we talked, we discussed this and voted on our board member, so that was done.
Right.
So that, that's already done and then approved because I was voted on from my station and approved by our commissioners. So that, that has already taken place.
Hey, hey, hey.
But we don't have a rule saying. So we don't have a rule saying it has to be a firefighter. We have rules saying it can be a firefighter. So my question is if we wanted to become a firefighter from each station to do that, then who decides to make that the rule? Do we let the firefighters vote from each station? And, or, or did, to me, that's a collective because we're one fire department. That's a decision for all them to make together. That, that would have to be a majority of every member voting to decide that yes, that's what we're gonna do. And then go back to the individual stations and say, okay, now you pick which one of your guys is gonna be the fire department, the, the board member, and make them vote on that. I think there's two separate votes that would have to have, have to happen inside the station in order for that.
You're correct.
To, to.
In order for everyone to be on the same.
For everyone to be on the same page, you're gonna have to vote in the rule that it has to be a, or however, I don't know the process of making that the legality of it, but it, whether it's the, the members voting or the commissioners or us saying it ha, from going forward, it has to be and, and then we put it to a vote to each station.
Then the commissioner would have to okay it, correct?
Right. But y'all have to make the decision, how are you gonna do it?
Then you make.
Yeah, always there's a point. That's always there's a point, and we cannot outpoint it, right? Find that out.
So how do we get to the rule that each one of us twelve has to be on the station or we're not here? How do, how do we get to that? That, that would be step one of that process, right? Step one is, is how do we just, there has to be a rule. There has to be a law in place of, of somewhere saying that that is the rule. Who puts that rule in place? The firefighters, this board, or the commissioners?
I think you'd have to put it in your bylaws.
Yeah, it has to be with bylaws.
Then who does that?
You do. The board does.
Okay, then I think we need to figure that out.
Yeah. So we can't supersede state laws either.
Yeah, so you gotta look at the pension book, pension board, and not supersede their laws already from state.
And I, I'm saying all this as a, as a bypass to abolishing the board. It's actually rebuilding the board, right? And I mean, is that kinda where this discussion is sort of looking right now?
Restructure.
Just restructuring the board versus abolishing the board?
I think there's a lot of firefighters that would really go to having their own board at their own fire station.
I think to be able to have an educated vote on that part of it, I'm not against that at all, so I'm not saying that. I think the numbers need to be ran to see what that's gonna cost your station or each individual station, to see if that's even a feasible.
Yeah, I thi, I think right now we're just, there, there's a lot of numbers getting thrown around that are, well, it might do this or it might do that. Well, I don't know that we know the real answer to any of those questions.
The firefighters.
It's kinda hard to say, well, we need to vote this in without knowing what it's really damaging or profiting the fire stations to do. I, I don't think we know the answer to that right now.
The firefighters at station A can't make an informed decision, whether station A is NINOCAR with incredibly high run numbers and a high maintenance bill because of it, or Harold with incredibly low run numbers and a low maintenance bill. They can't make that decision effectively without, without.
Numbers.
Having those kind, that kind of knowledge. I, I agree with that.
I think, I think somebody's gonna crunch some numbers down a little tighter on that before we make the decision that might be a station like Agnew that has smaller, smaller numbers.
I mean, look at Bridge Creek. They're the only individual fire station that's not with us. It's not a municipality. They're the standalone company up there. That's who you need to look at to compare to.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be a complete restructure.
They're getting our sale taxes and they're, I mean, they got deep pockets because of all this.
What'd you say?
I said they're getting property taxes, sales tax, our sales tax. I mean, they got money coming in like it's nothing.
Which we, we could look at restructuring in that structure. Their structure is a fire protection district, which gives them a whole different set of, set of.
When they started, they kinda started out like all we did. And they was offered to come in with us and they did do it. They, they chose to be a standalone station.
Yeah, and they got money running out their ears.
Cause they redid there and they got the property tax and all that to supply them.
And every little community has access to that. I mean, like, Harold wouldn't have all of that property.
What made that pass was when that big tornado went through there.
Yeah.
That right there was when they implemented that, it passed the line.
Left them up.
Yes.
So we've got a lot of people that stalked and a lot of people that haven't. Any other opinions out there?
I have a question. I, I've read, I've just been sitting over here reading Title Nineteen.
Okay.
And what happens to the individual stations if you abolish the board? Because it says in Title Nineteen, section D, you have to have a board, you know, to be a county fire department. So what happens in the immediate, and you know, when the hitherto is there no calls responded to? Into, until you have, till you go to the county clerk and you set. Set that, and you know, is there any thought on abolishing, is it gonna be prematurely? Like, do things seem to be in place at the individual districts or departments before that's done?
Hey, when I talk to the pension board, like, technically we can't abolish the board. We can all quit, but we can't abolish it. So the commissioners will have the twelve more in place. Technically, we can't get rid of the board as long as we have the pin, uh, the pension system. So we can't technically abolish the board, but we can all quit.
The last time that we checked on acquiring individual FDID numbers, they told us that it would be twelve, at least twelve months in order to get all of that in line.
Right in them all.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's a long time to wait on your own FDID numbers. What are you gonna do in the meantime?
What about you? Like, you were about to say something a minute ago. Now, now you're mad at me for calling one time.
So during that wait time though, you can still operate under the initial FDID number, no?
That's another million dollar question.
I mean, if you're, if you're disbanded, then you really wouldn't be Great County Fire anymore. So I mean, I, I mean, I would think if you were operating under that, that would be under false pretense. Well, if they, you know, if it is a process, then, then that would be a, I just lost the word I was gonna use.
A lot of this is federal. You haven't ever anything federal was gonna be.
But eight.
Now, when I talked to Perry Brenniger today about that, those numbers, he said the old numbers would be reactivated. It was a call to the fire marshal. That's what he told me.
And, and that would be under Title Nineteen what?
From prior to emergency management.
The old FDID numbers.
Yeah.
We were under Title Nineteen, was it A or something like that?
No, we were eighteen back then.
I think it was Title Eighteen.
Was it eighteen?
It was eighteen back then.
And that's what they said we'd go to an eighteen until we got all our stuff done. And if.
So if y'all lost the board today, it'd be a phone call away to go back to nineteen.
He said it would take time, but not a year. I mean, he said he would make the call to the fire marshal and reactivate those old FDID numbers that are still in place.
So it wouldn't need to have a process. It would be some type of a.
Re-statement.
Re-statement process.
What is Perry Brenniger's, um, title? Like, what, what is he with? What is, what is he do?
Now, he was with forestry.
So he's just an, he's an ASCOG, like.
He's the director of ASCOG in Duncan?
Something, yeah.
Something like that.
I mean, I really feel like we need to figure out who's the authority. Is it ASCOG? Is it the pension board? And then figure out who's the authority on it and then go to them and say, okay, can we do this? What do we need to do? How do we go about?
And if we're gonna go that far.
I mean, I don't, does he trump the, does he trump the state pension board? No.
Like, there may be something that none of us even know about that's come up, that could be better than Title Nineteen, Title Eighteen, whatever.
He's over the pension board?
No, 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 no. The, I think he's over the fire department. The executive director, the ASCOG.
I, I don't know. I'm like.
Yeah. He told me that with all this going on, that this needs to go back to the individual departments, is what he said.
How does that benefit him personally? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, he was making that recommendation.
It does, and it gives him more headache because then he has to like to take care of us.
Because he gets paid to take care of twelve stations instead of one.
They don't take care of us now? I guess they would give you.
What is that?
So, association.
It's a hurricane.
Okay.
I think what brought us here tonight, like this, I mean, brought this discussion up here is because of the continual turmoil that's been here for two and a half years that I'm, just we're being fussed in fact. And as it is, it's not gonna change, that I can see, here in two and a half years like this, it doesn't change. A little bit, but whenever you've got a fire department, when the fireman of a fire department asks an individual to step down and bring it before the commissioner, to have them removed, then they should, they should step down. And I think that's one of, one of the reasons we're, where we're at now with this board situation. And I think the firemen are, are, they're tired of it. They're, 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 they're just wore out.
They just want to step down. It's made because it is all, it's worn.
The, the, the two that spent, I asked her here, and I'm not gonna mention.
All right, Gary. Will you tell me if it's me, I'll go.
Go over there. Jesse, did you ever bring me the vote?
No, because that, you're gonna pass there, but that's.
Let's not start.
If that doesn't matter.
No, Gary, run it up. I'm asking if it was me and me alone, and if it is, I'll hit the door if they don't want me here. Y'all wrestling with you.
I'm asking if it was me and me alone, and if it is, I'll hit the door if they don't want me here. Y'all wrestling you out of the one, but not physical.
Have you talked to your station?
Me?
All right, I'm ready to make a motion.
I ain't got no damn papers.
We'll make a motion to table this. And Gary, why don't you grow some balls and kick salt? To gather more information.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
Drive a jury.
But why don't we get.
Go ahead, Keith.
We'll make a motion to table this to the next meeting to gather more information and to a final discussion.
Anybody second?
I second.
Well, she made McKean second in that line. Jaren, Matt.
Yes.
Danny. Travis.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Rod. Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Meeting is adjourned. Motion second.
Jaren. Matt.
Yeah.
Danny.
Yeah.
Travis.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Mike. Couple of yes. Great inside.